Welcome to the continuation of the Tuesday, March 10th Elmhurst Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 6 o'clock this evening for discussion about negotiations and employment of employee. We presently have five Board members present with Mrs. Ebner who is at a Churchville PTA meeting on her way back, so she'll join us in a few minutes. Mrs. Bastido is out on business this evening. And again, I apologize for the late start. We would love to blame it all on technology, but we just love to talk and we can't help ourselves, so I apologize for that. So please all rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And now for the very best part of any Board of Education meeting, staff recognition. The Shining Star Award has caught on and we're thrilled that it has. Mr. Purnell?
I'll leave you to direct this. Well, again, for the public, this is an award that we instituted this year that allows us to, in recognition of some of our employees that are unheralded heroes in the district who do things above and beyond and are often unrecognized. So this was a way to recognize those people and the nomination is by fellow employees who recognize those individuals among their colleagues who are going above and beyond to benefit the district and the children in the district. So tonight, we have again, a number of shining stars and I will turn it over to the Board of Education to have the honors of recognizing those individuals. And what we have done is we have asked the individuals if you come up at first and then you will be recognized individually, but stay up there because then you get your certificate and you have to shake hands. So you can't just run back home. Yeah. So if Shining Star members, you come up to the front and just circle around, you can turn your backs on us, yeah, facing the cameras. This is a national audience, this will be on CNN.
Margaret, I just want to start with you and we'll work our way around. I'll finish last.
All right, thank you. And this, as was mentioned before, this is certainly an honor for all of us to be able to recognize our staff, our teachers who are out there every day. And it's most important that the teachers, their peers, get to recognize them. So I am going to start off and I have a group, the first group is from Sandberg. If you wouldn't mind just raising your hand when I call your name and correct me if I don't say it correctly. Stacy Savitieri. Okay. Ricardo Vasquez. Heather Knight.
Start with Brian.
Okay. I am sorry that they are not here, but I am going to read them anyway, because this is really very important, that they were recognized. And all three of the people that I first mentioned are from Sandberg. Stacy is the orchestra director, Ricardo is the band director, and Heather is the band director at Sandberg. They were all nominated by Linda Fahrenbacher and Jeff Gale. Stacy, Ricardo, and Heather applied for two programs that will bring members of the Chicago Symphony Orchestra to Sandberg to rehearse with students. The first program is Dream Out Loud. This offers all Elmhurst instrumental band and orchestra students the opportunity to listen to a musician from the Chicago Symphony Orchestra. In addition, all three applied for the Citizen Musician Fellows and were one of a few schools selected. The Citizen Musician Fellows participate in all regular activities of the Civic Orchestra program as well as additional artistic and professional development. So congratulations to Stacy, Ricardo, and Heather. I also have Dawn Morris from Lincoln. Yay, thank you Dawn for coming, thank you! And I realize, and I realize that it's a very busy time for everyone, but I'm glad that I get to recognize you in person. Dawn is a special education teacher at Lincoln and she was nominated by Shelley Rizwicky?
Rizwicky.
Okay. And Jill Dickerson. Dawn continually goes out of her way to help support her fellow teammates. Her approachable demeanor makes it easy for others to seek her advice. She generates new ideas and is always willing to share her knowledge. She displays the true quality of an outstanding teacher. Thank you Dawn.
I have the honor and the privilege of recognizing Karen Clark first. Karen? Thank you. Food service manager nominated by Linda Fahrenbacher and Jeff Gale. Karen goes above and beyond to make Sandberg's lunchroom feel like home. She consistently tries new ideas that will help everyone eat healthy. That's a good thing. She makes new menu options that are appealing and tasty. Karen sends out emails to staff with encouraging messages and lets the staff know of new soups. Thank you Karen. I have the privilege and honor of recognizing Brittany Sterns and Regina Hughes. Oh, there we go. Very good. Brittany Sterns, 8th grade English teacher at Sandberg. Regina Hughes, 8th grade English and social studies teacher at Sandberg. Both nominated by Linda Fahrenbacher and Jeff Gale. Throughout the school year, Brittany and Regina have taken ownership of leading PBIS at Sandberg. They give, I guess I should say PBIS is the Behavior Program District-wide. Showing some success, it's my understanding. They give many hours of their time, energy, and effort to make the program a success. They have presented at staff, late arrival, and school improvement meetings. They collaborate with others in the building as well as the external coach. And would say thank you to Brittany Sterns and Regina Hughes.
And we have more to recognize. She's a librarian at Bryan Middle School. She was nominated by June Winchester and Debbie Thompson. The center of all information for the entire school. Katie works with all students, teachers, and educational assistants. She knows all the students' is helpful and productive. Her multimedia technology support is outstanding. Her special education background gives extra insight into helping students access information. Thank you Katie. Ellen Dunn. Ellen Dunn is a counselor at Bryan Middle School. She was nominated by June Winchester and Linda Fuller. Ellen has a significant impact on the well-being of the students and staff at Bryan Middle School. She is always willing to help out no matter what the situation and always puts a positive spin on things. Her caring nature, helpful insights, ideas, and knowledge play an important role in her counseling. Thank you Ellen. And Heather Baller. 7th grade math teacher and math department chair at Bryan Middle School. She was nominated by Diane Danilcheck, Ann Dakens, and Katie Hirsch. Heather never tires in her efforts to not only educate her students, but to inspire them with her school spirit. As the kids' leadership sponsor, she guides student leaders in activities to help and support others such as the community food drive, buying gifts for local families during the holidays, organizing school spirit weeks, and spearheading pack the place events to support Bryan's sports teams. In addition, she works collaboratively with her colleagues to provide students with instruction focused on the common core while embracing STEM initiatives. Thank you Heather.
The treat of sitting behind all of you is you get to watch a couple of Board members playing peek-a-boo back here. The next is for Brian Berg, Bill Riddle, and Rebecca Marionetti. They're all from the Music and Performing Arts Department in the district and they've all been nominated by Jim Plaskota, Laura Ryan, Becky D'Angelo, Amy Ritter, Lisa Marini, Mariani, I'm sorry, and Lauren, I apologize in advance, Gooey? Is that even close? I apologize. When the Edison School Singers were unexpectedly left without a director, Brian, Bill, and Rebecca stepped up and reunited the Edison Singers to ensure they were ready for the district-wide choral festival. Each made sacrifices in their regular schedules to make this happen, making sure it was a true district-wide festival. And finally, Eileen Carroll. Eileen is an administrative assistant for food services and transportation. She was nominated by Cheryl Spencer, Karen Claire, Garner Turner, and Marcia Kinsley. Eileen is always pleasant and patient, even on the busiest days of phone calls and problems that come her way. She is always helpful and cheerful with the parent and secretary calls as well as the staff that have needs from all 12 buildings. She will always go the extra mile without even being asked for help. She does an incredible job of keeping everything organized. She definitely does a great job at juggling all the balls. Eileen, thank you.
Now, we all recognize people are busy and have things to do. Everybody's welcome to stay if you'd like, but we also recognize that there are other things on your calendar as well. So we'll take a short 30-second break before public comment and then we'll continue with our meeting. All right. I have no blue public comment cards up here. Is there anybody here that wanted to speak during public comment? Seeing none, then we'll move on. Next is superintendent's communication, Mr. Purnell.
Yes, I'm going to turn this portion over to Dr. Fitzgerald who is going to introduce a presentation this evening for the Board.
Last Wednesday, we had a presentation by Mrs. Deblee, our reach coordinator, and we've asked her to bring the same presentation to the full Board today. There is an interactive part, so we will get you, yes, your cards. We will be having you do some interactive at the beginning of this, so I will turn it over right now to Deblee.
Yes, please. Again, I'm Deblee, the reach and professional learning coordinator for the district. I wanted to start by introducing a tool that has been implemented in a lot of classrooms across the district. It was brought forth by folks in the technology department and I thought that it would be an interesting, hands-on way of seeing what students are using. In front of you, you should have a half sheet or a card. It is essentially a simplified QR code. You will notice that each of you has a number assigned to the card and then on each of the sides of the graphic, you'll notice a letter, A, B, C, or D. So that if you're holding up a card with the A on the top, then your answer is respectively A. If you're to turn the card, that would be B, C, and D. Each student or user has a different code so that a reader or a device can capture your information. It's nice because it is somewhat anonymous so that students aren't able to look at the person who's next to them and say, oh, that was an A, let me change that, or I think my answer is incorrect. And what's also nice about this is that it is, to some degree, low-tech. Each student gets a piece of paper or a card and it does not require a whole lot of technology other than a teacher and a single device, whether it be an iPhone, an iPad, or potentially a laptop. Now, on the screen is the interface that our teachers see. So as an example, one of the questions that I'd like to pose to you is gifted students don't need help. They'll do fine on their own. No, you don't have to do that, thank you. So if you would, A indicates agree, B indicates disagree. And if you'll hold up your card, I'm going to use my iPhone and I will capture the information. And you may not see anything populating on the screen behind me yet because I've left it hidden. David, if you would. But then I can see who has responded or who hasn't. And this is a demonstration class. And if you'll, Dave, if you'll select Reveal Answers, the blue button, see that you all got it correct. And then if you hit Graph as well, it will show how many respondents and how many students got the answer correct. Now, if there are students who don't answer it correctly, it may engender a discussion or it could also be a question in which there are two or more answers. And so it could initiate a great conversation in the class. So without further ado, we'll just go ahead to some of the other questions if we can go back to the slides, that would be wonderful. Mm-hmm. All right. So this is the first question and it is true that gifted students, well, it's, you should disagree, but gifted students do need specialized opportunities. If you use the analogy of sports, we have high-ability athletes who look for special training, seek specialized coaches. So in the same way, I think if we approach gifted education in that same manner, then we would look for highly-trained or specialized teachers to work with high-ability students. The second question is teachers challenge all students, so gifted students will be fine in the regular classroom. And in many cases, we, research indicates that students do need specialized training and that a third of our teachers may have some of that training, but the vast majority of our teachers are not well-trained to work with high-ability students. Gifted students make everyone else in the class smarter by providing a role model or a challenge. That is also untrue. There are certainly opportunities for students to work with, in groups, multi-ability groups, but when a high-ability student is teaching other students in the class, it takes away from their opportunity to learn or engage in new material. And lastly, all children are gifted. We can say that they have talents or that they have abilities, but gifted in the definition of high ability in an academic realm, it's only a small portion of the population. I'm going to go ahead and move on. Oh, this one, it skips sometimes, I'm sorry, David, can you manually? You may have to use the cursor. Go to slide three. My apologies. This is the definition of gifted and talented out of the Illinois State Code. And I've highlighted that it is students who perform or show the potential in any area of aptitude, particularly in language arts or mathematics, and that it is the top 5% locally. The national guidelines go as far as 10%, but I would liken performance to achievement and potential as ability. And so we are tasked to identify students in both of those domains. So we're missing, I think we're missing a slide. Somehow it skipped. I did have an infographic, but we can come back to that or share that later. This may be an older version of the slides. That's fine. But why is this important? Gifted programming positively influences students or high-ability students. Longitudinal studies indicate that students who have specified or specialized training and courses and opportunities go on to achieve or to earn higher degrees. 60% go on to earn master's degrees and 50% of students go on to earn doctorates. So that's a pretty high number compared to the national average of 2% who earn doctorates. I'm going to go ahead and look at some student data derived from the district, but I do want to define a couple of terms before moving on. Ability is one of the things that we've talked about. Ability is a measure of thinking or reasoning skills. In some ways, it has to do with processing speed. This correlates with what folks know as intelligence quotient or IQ. And measurements of this include the OLSAT, which is the oldest Lennon Student Abilities Test, or the COGAC, the cognitive abilities test. Previously, the district did employ some of these tools, we do not presently. Achievement, then, is a measure of what is learned, content mastery. And much of this data we have already, or students participate in these assessments like the MAP or the ISAT or potentially PAR. I also do want to talk a little bit about just the distribution or looking at a bell curve. We have standard deviations with most of the students in, or I don't want to say students, but in any distribution curve, that you have the majority of results within the first standard deviation. So that's a little more than 60% of the population. When we're looking or thinking about cognitive ability, I'm going to drop some numbers into the screen. The first standard deviation is going to be yours standard or you're given. The second standard deviation, conservatively, there's indication that students who fall within the second standard deviation in terms of ability process at twice the speed of those students or individuals in the first standard deviation. If you were to apply that to the second standard deviation, then those particular individuals would be processing at roughly four times the speed of the average, twice as fast as the last standard deviation. And as you move further out, some research indicates that each standard deviation or with each standard deviation, processing speed doubles. That's sort of a conservative measure. There is some information out there which says that every five points of IQ or Student Ability Index may indicate a doubling of processing speed, but I don't know that that's necessarily verified. Wanted to show you data from Elmhurst. This is data pulled from our current 8th grade cohort. It is not complete in that there are 421 students for whom we have both MAP achievement data as well as OLSAT Student Ability Data. On the left-hand side, on the Y-axis, you'll find their MAP RIT score, the raw score, and along the X-axis, you'll find their Student Ability Index, which is roughly, again, correlated with IQ. You'll see that there's a large cluster in the middle and I'm going to drop some lines that will show how Elmhurst fares with some of the other, with just averages. But the first line, it may be faint, is the mean, or the national mean, at 100 points. Our first standard deviation falls at 115 points on the Student Ability Index. Our second line falls at the second standard deviation, which is 130. And our third standard deviation begins at 145. So you'll see that a number of students fall well above the mean. I'm going to drop the regular bell curve as well. So you'll see that in a high-performing district, this is not uncommon, that our bell curve is shifted. So in some ways, I'm going to drop our mean, Elmhurst's mean is at 110, and so roughly the curve in Elmhurst is shifted to the right by 10 points. And this is our bell curve in Elmhurst. So in large, we have many high-performing students or high-ability students as well. The first line that I would like to drop is that, you'll see, there's a little bit of a drop-off or a demarcation between some of the groupings. And that first yellow line is at a Student Ability Index of 135. And what that captures is 14 out of 412 students, or roughly 3% of our population. The second line, which is at roughly 130, or again, two standard deviations from the national mean, captures 41 out of 412 students for whom we had both the MAP and the OLSAT data, which means it's 10% of our population is scoring generally in the second standard deviation or higher on a Student Ability Index. That's a significant population. Then another line that I'll drop is right around 120, and that identifies 99 out of 412 students, or roughly a quarter of our student population. Now, the identification matrix currently as it stands for reach uses just an achievement measure or the MAP score. And what happens is if, say, we were to pick an arbitrary number just for demonstration's sake, but if there were a MAP score of 250 and that were the cutoff, then you would clearly see that there are some students who score very well on a Student Ability Index, but that would be left out of the gifted program because they didn't make an achievement score. And there are a couple of reasons that may be the case or that may influence that. For one, it may be a student who, for whom English is not a native language and many of the achievement tests are provided in English and in English only. It may be a student also who was not identified earlier in their academic career and has not been afforded the opportunity to learn more or at a faster rate. Hence, we have essentially stifled their ability to learn. So there are a number of factors that play into this. I shared with the Subcommittee a couple of statistics, if I may, on some of the data that I've been looking at with our current reach program. data, which means it's 10% of our population is scoring generally in the second standard deviation or higher on a Student Ability Index. That's a significant population. Then another line that I'll drop is right around 120, and that identifies 99 out of 412 students, or roughly a quarter of our student population. Now, the identification matrix currently, as it stands for REACH, uses just an achievement measure, or the MAP score. And what happens is, if, say, we were to pick an arbitrary number, just for demonstration's sake, but if there were a MAP score of 250, and that were the cutoff, then you would clearly see that there are some students who score very well on a Student Ability Index, but that would be left out of the gifted program because they didn't make an achievement score. And there are a couple of reasons that may be the case, or that may influence that. For one, it may be a student who, for whom English is not a native language, and many of the achievement tests are provided in English and in English only. It may be a student also who was not identified earlier in their academic career, and has not been afforded the opportunity to learn more or at a faster rate. Hence, we have essentially stifled their ability to learn. So there are a number of factors that play into this. I shared with the subcommittee a couple of statistics, if I may, on some of the data that I've been looking at with our current REACH program. In our elementary buildings, particularly in the area of math, we are finding some discrepancies in gender, ethnicity, and in some of our other subgroups. In our current fourth and fifth grade classes, we have roughly twice as many boys as we do girls in the area of math. And in our third-grade cohort, we have 82% boys and 18% girls. And that is in part due to the identification matrix as it stands now, because we're not using an ability measure, and it is strictly achievement. Some other data that I wanted to share, I'll have to do a little bit of explaining, but if the colored lines indicate a particular band of students who perform at this particular level, for, so, case in point, the blue line follows or tracks students who perform at the 90th percentile or higher on the NWEA MAP, and it's tracking their performance or their growth in the last several years. It's an imperfect way of looking at high-performing or REACH students, because not all REACH students necessarily perform at the 90th percentile. They may have been captured earlier in their academic careers and been pushed through the system, and/or they may have had a bad test day. It also may not capture those students who have a high ability index, but a low achievement score. But what you'll see is that in the 2011-2012 year is when the new curriculum for REACH math was implemented, and this is specific to math only. On the left-hand side, you'll see the percentage of students who are growing or make typical growth, and along the Y, or the X-axis, you'll see their performance over time. This does not track students over the course of years, but it's just a snapshot of the performance at that given point in time. And you'll see that as the program was implemented, and the change was really that it moved to a replacement math curriculum, meaning that rather than beings pulled out two days a week, that students were receiving an entirely differentiated math curriculum five days a week, that our growth, that more students are meeting their projected growth. This is a look at our English Language Arts data at the elementary level. By comparison, the ELA program remains a pull-out program, so students are pulled out of the regular classroom twice a week. And we don't see as many students in the top 10% making as, making typical growth. I think ideally, we would like to see all of those colored lines converging, and showing greater growth or performance, or number of students who are meeting growth. Wanted to provide just some observations in the last six months that, observations of the program, but also to define a couple of different models or approaches to gifted education. Enrichment are activities that add or go beyond the classroom, so they may be things like field trips, or interdisciplinary connections, projects. And typically, these are wonderful opportunities for all students. And this definition comes out of the National Association of Gifted Children, or NAGC. Acceleration, by contrast, then, is a strategy used for, to move through materials faster, at a more rapid pace. And acceleration is a strategy that is good for some, or a select group of students. If we think back to the distribution of ability or processing speed, that acceleration is only appropriate, or should be appropriate, for just a select group of students. If we look at our program overview, our program includes, in the area of ELA, enrichment as a pull-up program for our third through fifth-grade students, advanced coursework or REACH-level course at the middle school, and also in ELA at the high school, honors, AP or Advanced Placement, and ACP or Advanced College Project Courses at York. In the area of math, we have an accelerated REACH program, which is a replacement program, five days a week. And in the middle schools, an accelerated level, which is a one-year accelerated program for students, and also a REACH, also an accelerated, but a doubly accelerated program at the middle school. And at the high school, we have four levels currently, and are looking into the ACP opportunities as well, so the beyond AP coursework. You'll see that we have a number of opportunities that are available to these students. At the same time, I think you'll see, you'll notice that there are like terms used in a lot of the different categories, that we have enriched at the high school, but that it's enrichment at the elementary level, and that acceleration is used, as well as advanced. And so we do have to do a little bit of naming or nomenclature, and to look at that process, because I think there is also some misunderstanding of the different levels, or just a conflation of terms. I also looked at the number of participants currently in our program, and you'll see that in the area of ELA, we have roughly 15% of our students identified for REACH services in elementary, and then when they hit the middle school, about 25%. And so there's something happening between the fifth and the sixth-grade years, where more students are being identified. In the area of math, about the same as well, that, aside from the current fifth-grade group, that there's roughly 15% identification in math for third through fifth-grade students, and that that number increases when students move into the middle school. We also see a jump then, although honors isn't necessarily a gifted program at the high school, that we move from roughly 25% identification to 35, upwards of 35% that are in honors courses. So we do need to take a look at that, and look at pathways that students can follow, but also to really consider the kinds of opportunities that are afforded our students. Currently, our staff, we have 8.5 FTE, or full-time staff members, one in each of the elementary buildings, to work with our REACH students. At the middle school, we have the equivalent of 4.4 FTE, but across all of the middle school buildings, 17 teachers who work with our REACH students. And at the high school, we have countless, because we have myriad courses, honors, advanced, enriched, AP, ACP. So countless numbers of folks who are there, working with our high-ability students. And you may hear me, well, throughout the presentation, interchange some of the words, gifted, high-ability, high-achieving, but in a lot of ways, those terms can be used Which brings me to some topics that I think need review. The National Association of Gifted Children, or NAGC, provides a lot of guidance in terms of educational practices. And practices would be instructional in nature, be it differentiation, acceleration, compacting. It also provides programming standards and procedures, so this is more procedural. What should an identification procedure look like? What are the services? What is the curriculum that we're using? Knowledge and skill standards, so what are the competencies that staff members should have in working with high-ability students? What is the professional development that is available? And NAGC also recommends that a program is reviewed every five years. The last review was completed in 2010. These are program elements also provided by the National Association of Gifted Children, elements that should be part of a gifted program or extended services, that there be a philosophy, a mission, and a vision, that there is a continuum of program and services, so that it's seamless as students transition from grade level or from building to building, that there is a curriculum, and we're certainly embarking on that, as well as an equitable identification process that includes appeals and exit procedures for either students who are not initially captured, new students who move into the district, or students who are struggling. Also, data collection and management, that we look regularly at the data, whether it be number of students, performance of students, and how successful the program is. And a communication plan, be it with all of our stakeholders, families, community members, teachers, et cetera. Also, professional development, I think, is key with any teachers, that folks are up-to-date on best practices and new techniques in working with students, whether they be high-ability or other. So some of the recommendations that come out of just an initial survey of looking at what programs and services that are available in the district. I'd love to engage stakeholders in a conversation about what the community would like as part of this program. And consider some programming updates, whether they be curricular changes, or changes to the way students are serviced at the different levels. It might be levels, or titles of courses, et cetera. Define that continuum of services so that it is seamless, instead of jumping from one to three options, creating pathways or different opportunities that are accessible at different points. And refining really assessment and identification. In looking at the data preliminarily, we have, in a number of subgroups, we identify less than our district averages. So for example, the National Association for Gifted Children, and also the state, deems that we identify students, and that the subgroups are representative of the subgroups that are in the district. So for example, racial subgroups, free and reduced lunch, students who have special needs, or twice exceptional, that they are equivalent. And what we're finding is that the percentages that are published in our state report card, we're only identifying half of the students for REACH, if that makes sense. So for example, 17% of the students in the district receive some sort of special services, but in the area of gifted, only 7% of those students, 7% of identified REACH students receive special services. So there's something in the identification process that is somehow not weeding out, but not capturing those students. And lastly, I wanted to share with you some celebrations. The Illinois State Board of Education, recently, or last spring, reinstated the gifted endorsement, and to date, there are approximately 35 staff members in the district who have applied for that endorsement. Geometry also, I believe, is a celebration, that it is a new opportunity for high-ability students, and that there are passion projects also at the middle school, and that this stemmed out of a Genius Hour idea, and that students in the middle schools are working on TED Talk-like presentations that are incorporating in a lot of different skills. There are a number of contests and scholarships that are available to students. There are also grant opportunities. One is the Javits Grant. It is a federal grant reinstated last year, and there was more money provided into that grant for this year. This particular grant, however, is typically awarded to higher education institutions, and so it might afford us an opportunity to work with a university, or something along those lines. A couple additions that I also had, that I wanted to call out, were the REACH PT and the Board of Education, that certainly you are, that everyone has been really supportive of the program, and it speaks loudly and clearly that there is support for differentiated services for students. I think I gleaned over it, or glossed over it, but if you, if you think back to the distribution curve, the standard deviations to the left are for special services. If we were to pour as many resources and time and effort into the high-ability students because they require those kinds of services, then I think that we would see a lot of those students also perform better, and be afforded those opportunities to grow. Unfortunately, the infographic didn't make it. There is also a new Talent Act at the federal level that was reinstated, and so if you'd like to read up on that, there's more information on the REACH website. And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Any questions? I have one. Where do we go from here?
Where do we go from here? A really good question. In the next month or so, I am planning to host a community engagement, or I don't, I know that the district itself is embarking on something like this.
You can do your own, it's okay.
But really, an opportunity to hear from various stakeholders, be it you, the families, in terms of what we would like for this program to be. And it is, and I think there is a lot of support for this program in a lot of different ways, but to better define that, to define a mission and a vision, and to really craft what those services, for services are going to be. It will also entail an education piece. Anecdotally, I had a parent say to me, acceleration isn't gifted programming. So I think that has to do with some of the conflation of the terms, or the terminology, but to educate the general public and families what the services are, what the rationale is, and why it's important. And it's rather than a badge of honor that I'm in a particular program, or a participant of a club, a special club, that it be really looked at as services for a particular need.
Well, first, I want to say thank you. That was, that was very, very good information. And I was just going to follow up on that. I guess, my question is, what does the community want? Do we want, and I'm using this term, enriched program? Do we want an accelerated program? Or do we want both? And what type of resources will that, will that take in order to have those types of programs? So I think that is, I think for me, that was the key question that I was struggling with, on what do we want, you know, as a community? And are we willing to support those choices?
Absolutely. As part of the review, or as part of the engagement piece in community education, I have been gathering information from several districts that are similar in size, and looking at the different models and programming that is available. There is a spectrum of opportunity. There are, ranging from pull-out to full replacement, some districts utilize a tiered program so that there is a magnet within a school, that there is general enrichment for the top quartile. So there are a lot of different opportunities, and that's certainly something that I'm happy to share. And I think in some regards, it will require feedback from the community in terms of what it is that they want, and what they are supportive of. But like you said, it, there will be some parameters with which we need, within which we need to work, you know, if that requires additional staffing, and we're talking about this without considering logistics either at this point.
Can I just ask a question? Follow-up to that? And some sense of, depending on what the community wants, what that looks like in comparison to what we have? You know what I'm saying? So you can, you can conceptualize what it's going to look like for the student throughout the pre-K through 12.
Sure. Well, I think there is, I think I failed to mention that, I think there is a very strong program already in place, that we are seeing many students achieving and doing well and making growth. I think there, as with any program, there is room for improvement or refinements. We could implement something that doesn't change anything drastically, but we could really look at pathways for students. Or we could, like we did in 2010, consider a replacement program for elementary students in the area of ELA, or something along those lines. I mean, that really is, I don't want to posit anything that, you know, to put that out there, but there are different options or opportunities available.
Yeah, you talked about standards, NAGC standards. Okay, so, you know, we have a program in place. How close are we to those standards, the national standards for gifted children?
So the standards aren't a rating scale, so to speak, but they provide guidelines in terms of a robust, robust program, or a program that also considers different aspects, be it communication with families, or identifying appropriate groups of students and subcategories or subgroups of students. It isn't a, we're proficient or not, but there is, there are documents from which we can... can assess our program to see which areas need a little bit more addressing.
Also, we talked about administering the COGAT test for seventh graders, then second grade, then in fifth grade. The grades in between, I wondered, is it an option for a student if you need another data point for one of those students that's not in second, fifth, or seventh? Is that an option, like for them to have another data point?
Another good question. I think that we will need to build that into the identification process. I don't think that it necessarily needs to be a yearly process, but that there are entry points, but that there are always going to be appeals within that, whether it be a new student who were, who comes into the district or a student who may have been ill a particular day and we don't have that data point for that particular student, but that there would be options built in so that, that outside of the grade level, that students will still, would still have an opportunity to participate in some of those programs or services.
I have one more for you. I know there is some state mandate for gifted programs, but how specific is it and what kind of opportunities do we have to customize this for our own community rather than have to comply with the dictates of the state of Illinois?
Sure. The state of Illinois currently does not mandate and does not provide funding in the area of gifted, which is a double-edged sword. They provide guidelines for identifying students or the kinds of programs and services that should be available, but they, they really don't have, they don't have funding to support those programs. So on the flip side, I think there is a little bit of room for us to craft our program or to shape our program as we wish. At the same time, should funding become available or become a state mandate, you know, we would have to abide by those parameters at that point in time.
It sounds like there's quite a bit of leeway for us. That's great. That's great news. Margaret, do you have more?
And I wanted to go back and make sure that I, there was something, I believe in your earlier slides, that you talked about as NAGC defines gifted, it's somewhere between five and ten percent of the population. Then I'm also going back to another slide that looks at currently the population that we have that participate in reach is approximately twenty-five percent. Okay. So my question, and I know it can't be answered here and now, but the difference between this ten percent and this twenty-five percent, what, you know, what would we continue with an enriched program? Or, you know, what, how do we do? How do we manage that? Because our definition of gifted is if it's five to ten percent and we've got twenty-five percent in our reach program, it would suggest that it's not a true gifted program, which may be fine. We just need to be aware of that and then try to, how do we manage that population that is already in this program? What do we do for that group of students?
That is something that we'll have to look at and address very carefully. I think going forward, if we do make programming changes or provide different types of opportunities, we'll have to think carefully about those particular students. I wouldn't pull them out of the program, but think about those students as they graduate out of our buildings and move on to different opportunities, what that will look like. Now, there is a model, in particular, it's the school-wide enrichment model, that will work with the top quartile or really the entire school. It is kind of a grouping practice, but also some curricular changes that includes enrichment embedded into the classroom or the day. But there also, on the other end of the spectrum, is a, you know, a pullout or a replacement program altogether. So like you said earlier, it may be a blend of those. It may be, I think it really depends on the feedback from the community and what it is that, that folks are willing to have, what they want and what we can afford.
Could we go back to that slide with the percentages? Because when we talked about it in our committee meeting, in elementary-
This one?
Yeah, thank you. In elementary, you could, it'd be anywhere from five to twenty percent. You know, sometimes at some schools, there's five percent. So the twenty-five percent came from a middle school level. So there's a lot of inconsistency. So I'd like to look at that. So we have consistency within the elementary buildings because that seems to really fluctuate. And maybe because of that fluctuation, then you've got a large group, you know, going into the middle school. I don't know, you know?
Right.
So once again, thank you very much. And I guess I was thinking about the bell curve. And so to, to, you know, go both from what Margaret's saying, but also to kind of compliment, you know, our community and our staff and the educational system, that we, that we're not on the typical bell curve, you know, that it's a high-performing district. And so it's kind of a little bit relative, but it's also what you're trying to hone in on truly gifted versus the high-quality education. You see what I'm saying? So you have to, you have to communicate those aspects, I think. And I wanted to make sure that we recognize that in this district, both in the community, students, parents, and the staff. I wanted to go back to the COGAT, the COGAT, I think is how you slang it, is we are implementing COGAT now, or are we planning on?
We're planning to at the fifth and the second grade levels beginning next year. The COGAT was, or the screener, it's a shortened version of it, was given to the current seventh grade cohort to better differentiate their math program next year. That in part was in response to feedback we received from the current geometry group, from parents, teachers, various stakeholders. And so given that there is such a spectrum of performance or ability in that particular class, we wanted to provide a differentiated opportunity for students who could process at a much more rapid pace.
So does it apply to the ELA as well?
Not currently.
Does it ability? I mean, but could it? I guess that's what I'm trying, okay. Because I guess that's what I'm thinking. The processing time would be for all reach, it all, okay, okay. And so the typical, I'm going to call it evaluation points. You know, because students, I don't know how you, how I describe it besides the light bulb turns on, you know what I mean? Or they, they, they get to a certain place. It's not just sometimes age, it's just their learning curve, and they, they get to a place where they might be more what we call reach versus gifted. So that's why I was trying to get a sense of the evaluation points. Is it typical or is it general? Like the grades that we're using, it's typical in all districts when you evaluate reach or gifted students?
You mean when the grades that we've chosen to screen and identify the students? It's pretty typical. I've seen it in other districts, usually more like third grade for identification into fourth. We do it at second grade for identification into third, again at fifth grade as they're going on to middle school. And we certainly do have open enrollment type, like you're asking, Shannon, but typically with the COGAT, you give it every year, you're not going to see a change in the student's score, which is why we're looking at second grade, fifth grade, seventh grade. You shouldn't see a change in a student's COGAT score every year, which is why we don't need to administer the COGAT every year. If students were to enroll and we had no ability score for them, we, and it's a fourth grader, we certainly could give a COGAT to that student, pull some achievement data and see what we can get from their incoming school to do, to do that. So it's not like we would say, oh, you're a fourth grader, you'll have to wait until fifth grade to be assessed. We would certainly look at them and into what you're talking about, Mr. Stufen, the students, we do know that sometimes they'll be identified gifted in second grade and some won't be identified until fifth grade. It's just a matter of sometimes that's just when the child is able to show that, that ability and that performance. The only other comment I would like to make too is, I think I'm hearing this, but I just want to make sure, when, when they talk about the top five or ten percent locally, that's for the district, not per school. So I've seen it where one school has is the bubble for the year and the next year has the lowest amount of kids because it's all dependent on that cohort. So when you look at second grade, when we look at second grade data next year for identification into third, it could be one school that's going to have a lot of kids. It could be very equally distributed. It could be one school has a lot and one school doesn't have as many. And then the very next year, it can look very different depending on the group of kids. So I just want to make sure that we understand that it's the top five to ten, five percent according to Illinois School Code, ten percent according to NAGC, which if you look at our data on that, our top five to ten percent falls in there nicely. But again, that's locally. So if we have a hundred students at a grade level, we'd be identifying the top ten kids, five to ten kids, not regardless of what school they're at. So I just want to make sure that we may not be equitable at all the schools.
So the last question I had is, we talked a lot about more the elementary level and the entry. That same concept seems to be true at the high school, and because we're looking at five different levels, if you will, if you look at advanced all the way to the ACP, how, and you're probably including this in your communication when you talk about it with the community or the parents, is to help identify or help in advising students in where should they be from freshman, sophomore, junior, senior on various different subjects, if you will? Do they enter into honors or do they go into the AP or, you know, I don't know if you can share some of that, but at some point, I think that that would be a great conversation.
Absolutely. I agree. I don't know that I can address that. I mean, I think it's, there are more levels, I think, than I'm customarily used to, but that's, it's, that's a, that's a challenging one to address. Because I think the more that we differentiate the kids, we may end up pigeonholing them or that they're identified for a particular track, and so we run into a tracking issue.
Correct. And so I guess that I didn't, like I said, I didn't expect an answer, but that would be a great conversation for future because I know that that is a concern, not a concern. It's always something that you think about in our education system, the people, employees, as well as the students, as well as the parents. And so it would be helpful to kind of help in that effort.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jan?
Is this an area of education that needs a high degree of individualized services? I mean, do these kids need IEPs?
In some ways, perhaps. Unfortunately, Illinois is not one of the states where gifted education is mandated, but there are states where gifted education is couched under special services, that it is an extension of services and that students of high ability have individualized learning plans or are afforded different services. It might be, you know, something to consider or at least discuss.
Obviously, it's real resource intensive and we're not jumping into individualized plans for more kids than we need to, but I'm just wondering, I mean, you did raise the symmetry of high and low and performing students and how there are similarities there. Seems like it's more a program at the, at the, the high-performing end, but I'm just wondering if there is some need for introducing individualized services in some form, not jumping in both feet, though, obviously, so.
If I could add a little bit to that, Mr. McDonough. The state recognizes specific disability categories, the state of Illinois, through the school code, and as Mrs. Lee said, this, this particular state does not recognize gifted education as one of the disability categories. So therefore, you could not, on that solely alone, find a student eligible for special education services.
I didn't want to go to the legal side of it. I just wanted to conceptualize the, you know, the need for services a little bit differently.
I could argue, given the right resources and ability, you want an IEP for every kid. An individual plan for every child that maps out their, their educational program to make maximum use of their potential and, and all of that. So, you know, why on either end? I would say let's argue about putting together IEP for every child.
We'll just call it an ILP, Individual Learning Plan, then we don't have the legal side of it.
Just kind of going down that road a little bit. I mean, we're, we're all doing this because we want to help every kid at every level, right? I mean, it's about how do you take every kid and challenge them? How do we move that whole curve right? And, you know, I think the challenge is, and thank you, this is a fantastic program. It's great to have it, we're lucky to have it. And my colleagues have asked a lot of questions I had already had, so I'm just going to stick to these. But in a high school, what percentage did I miss that? Percentage of kids, if you take honors through ACP?
Gosh, upwards of thirty-five, forty, forty-five percent.
Okay, I think I remember you saying something, right. And that just gets back to this distribution. We talked about twenty-five percent of the kids to the right of the line. You said the kids to the left of the line get help, and so that leaves twenty-five percent between the mean and the twenty-five percent cutoff for reach that are kind of there. And it's like, how do we, how do we leverage this program in order to lift every kid? In high school, they've got a lot of different pathways, a lot of different, we call them tracks. I mean, and, you know, it's, it's not politically correct to call them tracks, but they are. I think the obligation we have is to create pathways between them, because let's face it, an AP track is an AP track, an honors track and an enriched track, they are there. They're, when you lay out the course, there are boxes that have arrows to other boxes. The question is, can we bring ladders in? And so when we take this back, you've got five levels at the high school. How do you articulate that back through middle school, you know, back to elementary school? And, I mean, this gets too expensive, too. I mean, you can't create five, you know, five different levels of a course offering there, but, but the question is, is, you know, how do you take what great things are happening here and cross-pollinate that across everybody?
That's, it's a tricky task, certainly. I will say, I don't know that you could move the bell curve to the right very much. So the Student Ability Index is a pretty stable measure. It may fluctuate a little bit if you're following Carol Dweck's work about fixed and growth mindset, but the ability is just sort of a natural ability that you're born with and that does not fluctuate a lot. What happens, so the, so one of the arguments or one of the approaches that you could take is that when you move a student who is high ability or processing at eight times the speed of the norm or four times the speed of the norm and higher out of a classroom, then a regular classroom teacher has more ability to attend to those students who are in that particular classroom. So rather than having to differentiate for four levels of students, that they can really target instruction and activities for maybe two, two general broad levels. In some ways, in defense of, of, you know, the reach program or high ability services and programs, those students are moving at a much more rapid pace so that there's not as much repetition that's required. They can move through, and that, which is why they-
I mean, I understand there are a group, I mean, there's a five percent group of kids, there's the twenty-five percent group of kids. I'm just saying that, how do you challenge every kid to move faster than they think they can move? And they're obviously going to be shades of differentiation. The question is, what are the correct groups and what's the correct range within a classroom? But interesting, you said, so we don't move kids to the right, we move kids up?
Up.
On that, okay. So in order to move it to the right, you just have to get smarter kids?
You know, this is probably going to shoot us in the foot, but when we say we're a high-achieving district, we are. But we are also a high-ability district.
Yes.
And so before we tap ourselves on the back too much, and I'm shooting myself-
We got great parents.
Yeah, it is. It's the parent population, it's the kind of kids that we get, and I think sometimes, you know, again, I'm shooting myself in the foot as superintendent, going, I'm going to take credit for, you know, but how much added value to we give to kids who are already skewed to the right? And are we challenging those kids and moving them as far as we think that's the challenge, I think, for the Elmhurst School District?
Right. And then along those lines, just one last question for you. It was a bit disturbing to hear that we're underrepresented in subgroups, and I'm trying to figure out why, why we wouldn't, I mean, these are, these are kids that are, have the ability that we're failing to identify, and how does that happen? And how does that happen?
Right now, we're using an achievement-based matrix. And all of those assessments are in English. So particularly for language learners, they won't be able to show their ability or goodness, for a number of reasons. And we talk about, well, without getting into all the political kinds of things or, you know, trying to be PC. But ability is also, in some ways, a measure of privilege. Not ability, I'm sorry, achievement. I misspoke. Achievement is a measure of privilege.
But the question is, is we get kids at a certain level and they're with us a period of time and then they leave at a certain level, and how much value, you know, do we add to them?
Yeah.
But if it's the assessment, we should fix it.
Right, right. So in short.
If it's achievement, then it's a separate issue we may need to address as well.
Right, right. So in short, I think we do need to look really closely at the identification measure, which is why we're wanting to move forward with reinstating the ability measure. There also need to be some programming changes once we identify some subgroups of students and providing them with services to get them to the achievement level of their peers.
Excellent. I mean, just need to find that pot of gold in the backyard and we'll be all set.
The ability test will go a long way of identifying students we are missing. And it's not only just because of the LA. In my experience, I had students that I taught who, because I didn't have the training, couldn't identify them as gifted. They were the kid in the back of the room who never participated, never said anything, in some cases was not achieving at all. You would think that was a kid at risk. And yet, a very gifted kid sometimes doesn't have a need to show their ability and their achievement. They are doing their own thing and they're not showing what they're capable of doing, and so they get missed. And if you look on that graph, I would say the kid on the far right who is down is one of those kids. That very, very highest ability of that group and yet is not achieving at that level.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The agenda looked so short, didn't it? Mr. Purnow.
You know, you look, learning and teaching and curriculum takeover board means this is what you get. I'm just saying.
We did ask for it.
They chew up trees and they take a lot of time. Next item is discretionary staffing. And I'm bringing this back to the Board of Education just so that we kind of reset where we were in the staffing recommendations and get a sense of where the board wants to go with this. One of the things that has come up is through technology and a request to add staffing to the high school. And the staffing request that has come forward is in two forms. One is adding an additional class at the high school for tech programming repair, better, you know, and that's not the correct term, but that's what it is. And that would be a six tenths of a position, I believe. And then there is also an added request that we add to the instructional coaches at the high school that would raise the staffing level to a 1.2 overall. And I just wanted to circle back a little bit with the Board of Education because at our last meeting, we had decided that we would not be approving any discretionary staffing for the coming school year. And as you remember, and up on the overhead, we had gone through a process of identifying discretionary staffing options last year, of which the Board of Education funded a number. And so I don't want to lose sight of the fact that there was a priority list that we developed. And, you know, right now, our position has been not to add discretionary staffing. That's not to say we can't. And if that's the desire of Board of Education, we can certainly add that staffing. But the 1.4 has not been budgeted nor has, have we approved that without the recommendation of the Board of Education? And we've been careful not to add staffing with board approval. So I want to just revisit that tonight and see where the board is on that, that request from technology and where we want to go with that added request. Because it is a staffing request. It was a programming request, but there was also additional staffing to that.
Anybody want to open up?
Just a question. Is the full 1 point, I'm sorry, I probably already said this and I wasn't listening, the 1.2, rather. 1.2 or 1.4? 1.2. Is that all related to the tech internship program at York? What are the components of it? I'm sorry.
Six tenths.
Six tenths.
Was the internship program. The other six tenths was an additional addition to the instructional coaches at York.
So I know last year, we thought we were going to have double the amount of freshmen come in. And I know that we allocated headcount for that. So is there some way of figuring this out? Like putting the two together somehow?
We have reduced their staffing. So we have a lot allocated for that this year. So because of the overstaffing position that they were in last year, we have reduced staffing numbers at the high school for next year. And so we have removed from them three FTEs from last year's request. So we've already kind of corrected for that enrollment. So they are, you know, again, what we discussed at the board level was a maintenance budget that would keep class size, programs, all those things in the same place as they were last year, but not add into them. And that's what we've done. So we've backed out, because of that overstaffing at York last year, we backed out three FTE, full-time FTEs for that position. And then at the elementary, we've backed out positions because of enrollment projections. So we are, we are down, I believe, five positions at the elementary school because of enrollment. So overall, we have reduced the staffing levels across the district as reductions for those two areas by eight FTEs. Now, at the middle school, if you remember, we added staffing because of enrollment. And so we are adding, Jim, do you remember what our total, five?
Five.
Five FTEs. So we're down three staffing FTE from this year to last year maintaining. So this piece was not included in that staffing.
I think, you know, when we had this conversation last time, this one was a unique program because it had a cost savings element to it. And in a conversation, you know, I think, backing up, the technology plan that's out there is driving a lot of this stuff. And I think you saw it in CNI, we saw it in finance on a preliminary draft basis as coming to the board. But just to jump ahead, if you execute that plan or any part of it, Dave needs to hire staff, Dave Smith. This, in talking with Dave, would potentially save him from hiring some of the staff. And so while you're adding, you know, 1.2, you may be saving one. So I think you gotta, you gotta put that in the mix. In addition to the fact that you've got kids coming out, Microsoft certified or, you know, various other certifications that can help them get a, to get a job, A+, Network+ things like that, that are very monetizable when you get out. This was, because it's kind of a hybrid program. I mean, I think when we looked at it before, we identified it as a little bit different than this list because it has an ROI to it. And so I think at the end of the day, it probably depends on where we're going with the tech budget, too. I mean, I love the program. But, you know, the question I would have is whether we can find, as we talk around this tech budget, getting the support staff in place before we start adding devices is important. Now, I think the budget now has them all going in together. And, you know, potentially, there's an opportunity to carve something out of the tech budget because you don't get the savings right away. You got to invest the six tenths to start. And then I don't think that other six tenths comes in right away. The support ad, that was only if you went one-to-one in the high school, though.
Well, the recommendation right now is 0.6 immediately. And that, so I want to make sure the board understands this. The 0.6 is for the internship that you're talking about, Chris. This is training students to be. The other six tenths is instructional coaching at York for next year that's not related to the internship program.
Right. And so what I'm saying is, you could, that tech budget has like $300,000 to $500,000 more money than we have in a budget for it. I don't know where we're going to find it, and that's a discussion we'll have. But you still have a big bucket of money in the tech budget and you, this program requires an investment upfront to get the first class done, to train these kids, to be able to then relieve you of staff issues. Those issues are going to be coming in a lot more when, if you were to start proliferating devices at the high school. And I'm just saying, this is a discussion for when the tech finally comes to us. But there's an investment period, but then it pays for itself, this program does, over time, I think. I mean, we've asked to talk about how that works. And so that's why I can pull that off this list and put it over more on the technology side as we look at where that program goes. And I think in the context of how we fund this, I think you're right. We looked at this and said, we're not running a budget that's capable of absorbing discretionary. My question would be, is there money in the tech budget if we spread things out a little differently to afford this, to get it started? Because the tech department is the one that's going to benefit from cost savings down the road. Again, probably a better discussion when it comes to the table, but no, that's just my two cents.
Shannon, go ahead.
I agree that those were, my thoughts coming into tonight's meeting was, I kind of differentiated the discretionary list that we talked about in the past versus going to one-to-one at the high school. You need staffing, that's our plan, our Mobile Learning Initiative. That's our plan to go to, you know, one-to-one devices. Students are taking tests on devices. We need to get devices in their hands so they're efficient with taking tests and, you know, Google applications. So I agree with what you're saying. We, and we want to go beyond just the high school, too. Like, the first scenario here that we talked about in committee was, you know, Google Apps grades four through 12. So we need to start pushing technology further down, you know, middle school and elementary. So, you know, I'm looking at it as a technology project, Mobile Learning Initiative versus discretionary spending.
What's the approximate cost of FTE?
When we asked that question in the finance committee, the FTE that he would add was about what the, at the similar rate to the FTE that would be added on the instructional side. So if you're getting a kind of, do they bounce out, what the add versus the save, are they the same salary level?
No, I'm just talking about the two adds. What's the approximate cost of 1.2 FTE?
Just the 1.2.
Probably about $90,000.
I think there's some real exciting things going on here that I think is worth the investment. And I do understand we've got to be disciplined and we do need to use the input of our stakeholders who came up with this. And this did show up high on some of our ratings and more in the middle of the other. Yeah. I think, from what I've heard in my visits to the schools, that I think the instructional coach has been a success for a lot of teachers. I think they're getting a lot out of it. And at the same time, this, I think what was said in committee was, 27 kids have signed up for this course. And I really think it's one of those things that could be life-changing. And I kind of think this is a good investment on both counts. That being said, we drop a little bit closer to zero in the low fund, the low fund point.
Chris, go ahead.
I guess that's where I was kind of coming at it before. In a $2.8 million technology budget, can you find $90,000 of savings somewhere? Maybe we buy a few less of something in order to fit that into that budget to make it budget neutral to all of us. Just thinking, but that's a conversation that we're going to have. So when do we need to know? When do you need to know?
Well, the instructional coach piece, we can hold off on. I don't need information on that. I think the internship program is a little different because, in fairness to the high school and it, this program was run through the Learning and Teaching Committee a couple of months ago, if I remember right, in concept. And at the time, I spoke about the staffing implications of running that program. The committee said, go ahead, have the high school offer the program anyway. We'll decide later on if we're going to do the staffing piece or not. So we added it on that direction. We added it to, we added it to the, we added it to the class course list. So we do have students now who are signed up for it. Yeah. So we have students who signed up for it. So in fairness, I think, you know, and I'll fault myself, we should have been clear, and I didn't think of it until that night, that there are staffing implications. And we should spell those out clearly to the Board of Education before we present you and entertain a discussion about new programs or services. Is there staffing implications? Because a lot of times, we focus on the textbooks, we focus on technology. But in this case, there were staffing implications, too. So I feel, I feel a little like we're stuck with the internship. I think we offered it. I think, I think it'll be tough to back out now in fairness to the high school. But I do think the other piece of this, the instructional coaches, please, we have not discussed in any depth. I think that's a whole nother discussion that probably needs to be had because it goes directly back to the discretionary staffing issues that we talked about at previous board meetings that we all agreed to would be a freeze for this year, so.
So for a final thought, this board, what, last year, last April, if I recall, had the presentation that was from other districts, our district, administration, teachers, PTAs all involved. We have said we want to move forward with Mobile Learning Initiative. I do know, and I don't want to steal the thunder about the committee report, so we've had discussions about how do we move that forward. And so I know that this is a one-off based on the timing, so, you know, we can figure out how we handle this. But I think the bigger issue that I would like to discuss and figure out a plan is, how do we move this Mobile Learning Initiative throughout the district? And how do we, how are we able to afford to do it, deploy it? You know, let's look at the comprehensive plan.
I'm sitting back and I'm thinking about this. And I do recognize, and Dave, thank you for keeping us focused, that we did talk about this discretionary staffing and we did make, we made some choices. And a lot of different groups weighed in and said what their priorities were. And I think that's important. I think we need to stay consistent to that. I also agree that there is, to me, there's a separation here. There is the internship, which would be ideal if that 0.6 could be found some way in the tech budget. That would be ideal. But I think that's a class that rightly or wrongly, we agreed to that the class could be offered and students have signed up for it. So I'm separating those two out. I think the instructional coach request goes back to the discretionary staffing position. But I think the internship, that 0.6, if we could move forward on that piece, I would be supportive of that.
So I support it as well, with the caveat that I would like to put it into the tech budget as a placeholder for now. I just, given where we are with the budget, and I'm serious about this, with the negative numbers that we have here, let's put it there. We're going to have an overall discussion about the tech plan, but if that's one of the ones that needs to fit in, let's fit it in now. And if we have to defer something in the tech side, we can talk about that when we get there. Or we can find some other source of funds for it. But right now, I think we got to balance, you're going to add something, you got to balance it with something. And in some ways, in due respect to this list, because this was discretionary, that was going to be over and above. And if we're going to do it, if this one's a budget neutral, I can argue that it's budget neutral. I really believe in the program and like to do it. But I think we should at least put it in the tech budget to start. We need to have that discussion as soon as we can. And we'll see where it floats. But I just don't think we can kind of randomly decide that we're going to spend 90 here or 90 there. I mean, there's probably a bunch of things that we would like to spend $90,000 on. This one's a really big deal, but I think we can find the money in the tech budget.
Anybody else? Otherwise, I'll throw in my two cents. Probably very repetitive. Probably very repetitious of what's been heard, but first of all, Dave, thank you for keeping us disciplined. I appreciate that.
Yeah, you thanked me now, but.
And, and I will say, I don't think there's a lot of people that could accuse this board of spending money recklessly. But when we take a look at, at the discretionary staffing priorities, this does rank number two. We can't afford number one. This facilitates one-to-one computing, and that's the direction this district is headed. To do that, we would have to add support staff. And this, this program, this class supplants support staff through the use of kids and the education of kids to get them certifications that, as Mr. Bloom says, can be monetized. It enriches STEM skills, something that's a priority of this board. I'm in favor. I would support the funding of the entire thing, the 1.6. If we want to be more conservative, I'm sorry, 1.2, we've thrown around all these fractions of people. But I would, I would, I would support funding the entire 1.2 if we want to be more conservative. That's fine. But I think this is of high enough priority. The instructional coaches, by all reports, have been a tremendous success, and I think we need to keep that momentum going. We're headed in the right direction. Let's keep it going. Chris?
Given what we saw with the one-to-one program and the Mobile Learning Initiative, this is all wrapped together. So I separate the internship program for right now from the rest of this. But I think that it's people processing technology, and they're going to, the plan's going to come, and I commend you guys because it was teaching and learning, or learning and teaching and technology that came in for the first time since I've been on the board. They came in and talked to us together about a technology program, which made me feel great. Let's have that discussion because the tech coaches, you know, are in the context of the devices, are in the context of teaching methods and how it works together. And we need to talk about what our rollout horizon is going to be based on what we can afford. And then staffing as it pertains to that, which that is one of. Believe me, I'd love to add it, too, but I see the budget, and it just makes me nervous kind of where it is and where we are with things. And I do think that this is a foundational program that we can add with a straight face out of the tech budget. So I would start there. I think the other 0.6 would be a discussion that we should have in the context of the technology discussion we're going to have hopefully shortly.
Yeah, the tech presentation will be April 14th from Learning and Teaching and from tech. We'll have ITCs available. We will go, start from the conceptual framework to where we want to go, to budget, to evaluation plan, so that we are evaluating the program as we roll it out. So this conversation today really helps us understand where we might be, and we'll have that in mind as we bring it forward. So it will be, it's set for April 14th.
Just one other caveat, just for this process, because with the mobile learning plan, it has to be also in context of other discretionary staffing. And that was the purpose of going to all the stakeholders last year, was to get input into what the priorities were for discretionary staffing. So somehow, you have to nest the Mobile Learning Initiative, if we're looking at more discretionary staffing options, with the rest of that. Because, you know, staff and stakeholders were very complimentary of this process last year, that we asked, the board asked for their input and stakeholders. I think you want to be cautious that it doesn't appear that we're now putting that aside and making decisions in isolation again. And it's just, how do we do that process if we get to that point?
I would be curious about, now that we've put it out there, because I've heard rave reviews about this program, whether it changes any thinking on that chart now that they've experienced it? Because I had teachers come and say that they just think it's phenomenal, they love their tech coach, that's the person that makes it run in their building. And just now that we're a year into the pilot, does it change any of the thinking anyway?
See, if I would have heard that we had discretionary funding for this year, I would have went back and did the process again. You know, but I just didn't do it.
But to that point, it's number two. Only second to math interventionist. So, so, I mean, I clearly looked at that, and I guess that's why I made my comment, is that, you know, everyone is in support of this, and so it's not, we don't, you know, we're not, not thinking about that. But, but to your point, to go through the process just reinforces that it's all being communicated and everyone's reminded of their decisions. Or have they changed? Is that the point?
And part of the process is an explanation of what these are and how they fit in with the district mission and all of that. Because I think, you know, you have, the instructional coaches have been very popular and very, very positively accepted. But you just remember, they're only at the secondary right now. And you have the elementary, that's a whole nother discussion, and you have to have that kind of interaction with all your stakeholders for them to understand, okay, maybe it's not a priority right now, but where is it in the future? So that's part of that discussion.
Now, let me ask you, I mean, I, from all the comments we've heard, the board's clearly in favor of this. Do you have what you need from us? Do we need to make a motion? Do we, what, what do you need from us to make a definitive?
No, just so, so I'm clear, and we can put it in. What I'm hearing is, we're going to try to work with David, find the 0.6 FTEs for the internship program. And then, on April, Teaching and Learning, along with tech, will come back with an overall mobile initiative presentation. And then at that point, further discussion on, on the priorities and where it fits up.
Okay. All right. Then, that takes us to board committee reports. Finance and Operations Committee, Mr. Bloom?
All right. We, we met on the 25th. Really quickly then, January monthly financial report, we are tracking as we have budgeted, which, to remind everybody, is about a $1.8 million deficit, which is spending part of our fund balance, making an investment, prudent investment. Chris, is there, there's nothing else new with that. It's, it's on plan, on budget. We've beat this technology thing to death. I apologize that, we started talking about it early. It came to committees, it came to learning and teaching, it came to us, more in draft form. I think all of us had some input before it came to the entire board table, and we're putting Dave on the spot by talking about something that's not done yet. So that's why it's not here today. But it will be here. So, let's see, what else do we do? We talked about student fees. Those will be coming into the board table. I think the preliminary thinking that Chris had presented was basically flat, except for some changes due to textbook adoption cycles. Insurance broker contract, you know, I think Chris is going through the process. I think he, he's leaning towards retaining the same broker. He will be bringing that to the board at the time when a decision should be made. Updates, building capacity study. So Frank and Chris talked with Cropper after, you know, after our conversation, after the demographic study. They had helped them with some methodology, which Frank put into the flux capacitor and sent back to them. And they will, they'll be using that to evaluate any kind of, any kind of scenarios that we'd like to look at. And basically, the magic in the flux capacitor is a, is a capacity based upon classroom space rather than square footage. And so, so they have that, and we'll be seeing that when we talk about different scenarios we want them to run. And then, summer capital maintenance projects. Frank just wanted to highlight the fact that he'd moved some money around in a few buckets, but the net is the same. And Chris, that comes to our board for approval at some point in time here, before it goes?
I think it already did.
Next summer, or, well, this summer coming up. Right, these will, these will come to the board table. You were just giving us an update. Sure. Okay. So I just wanted to point out that what we talked about, the changes you will see as they come to the board table. And that was it.
Any questions? Move on to Teaching and Learning? Shannon? Learning and Teaching?
Okay, thanks, John. No, sorry.
I said corrected once again, and did we approve that flux capacitor? Auto shop or wood shop?
Thank you. Okay, we talked about the instructional materials, which is on the agenda tonight in the consent agenda. And what I wanted to point out was the four classes that are going to be offered through, York teachers will be teaching classes through Indiana University. It's Composition 101, Literature 101, Speech 101, and Personal Finance Honors. So those are the four classes for the Advanced College Placement Project, offering dual credit through Indiana University. And then there are also materials proposed for different high school classes, Algebra A and B, some instructional, for the instructional students, some of their materials, some Spanish Heritage material. So it was a lot of different materials at the high school level. And then Debbie Wright also presented some material, New English Language Arts Curriculum for Middle School. So it's a shift from the springboard application that was being used. It's going to be from Houghton Mifflin. And she talked about a lot of the benefits of, of this program. Okay, Mobile Learning Initiative, we've, we've talked about that. And then the other big topic was the REACH program, which we, we talked a lot about tonight. Yeah, is there anything else I'm missing? It was, it was, those were the three topics. What was that? Yes, we did.
We had the public there. So please, public, come to our committee meetings. Sometimes you even get to participate. So please come.
Any questions for Shannon? I have two. These Indiana University ACP classes, are they all honors-weighted? Grade point, honors-weighted? Do we know? Okay. And my other is not a question, but a comment, just to warn parents that the textbooks for these classes come at, they're college textbooks, they come at college prices. So when you're checking through the York bookstore in August, be prepared. Karen, anything else?
Yeah, so for the Indiana University dual-credit courses, it says you get college credit. Is that universal to colleges? I mean, or will the individual colleges determine whether they will accept them as college credit?
The, like everything else, if you transfer from Indiana University to Northwestern, they will evaluate whether they accept that. But it is an Indiana University credit. So in all likelihood, at most universities, Indiana University credit will transfer to other universities.
There is a website, by the way, that you can plug all these into, and it can tell you what universities accept other universities' classes. All right. Anything else for Learning and Teaching? Would you have something to add there, Chris? Okay. Got it. All right. Next, that leads us to the superintendent's consent agenda. Anyone want any of those items removed?
Yes, I will move to remove item C from the consent agenda.
Can I have a motion for items A and B, and then we'll get to C?
I move we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A and B.
Thank you. Moved by John, seconded by Shannon. Mrs. Walsh, we're not spending any money. We just say, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Same sign? That motion passes. Now, a motion for item C. Anyone can make a motion for item C.
No, it's just removal. Go ahead, if you got it.
I move that the Board of Education approve and authorize the superintendent or his designee to purchase server hardware from Dell and to purchase surveillance cameras, software licenses, and professional services from Activity Solutions LLC for a total cost not to exceed $60,000.
And I need a second, please.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved by Karen, seconded by John. Any discussion?
Yes, I was wondering if we can go through and talk about the process on how we selected this particular vendor and what the criteria for selection was.
I'm going to turn this over to Dave Smith. Dave was the one that did the RFP, and he can walk you through. I would just refer you, you have some of the rankings in your packet, so.
Yes, I hope, I'll try to summarize. First of all, we posted an RFP, a Request for Proposal, back in, I think it was late October. And I was actually surprised there were 15 respondents, which was a far greater number than I had imagined we would get. And I knew it was going to take a while to actually work our way through all those proposals. So it took about two months, by the time we had the, the RFP was closed, about two months of calling almost everyone to clarify, calling and/or emailing to clarify their proposals. Because when you get 15 proposals, there were some miscommunications, misunderstanding in the way some things were written. So there had to be some adjustments made. And I was very clear with all the vendors that any adjustments that were made were really to clarify and to make the proposals more consistent for evaluation purposes. There was no opportunity to change pricing or to, you know, come, you know, basically say they came up with a better deal in the last four weeks or something like that. That was off the table. So they had, I held them to their original pricing, but there were some modifications to quantities. There were a few clarifications where they had to add in some components because of, again, just because of misunderstanding of the, of the specific requirements of the RFP. So it took a while to level, level it out and have the consistency so that could be evaluated, the proposals could be evaluated. But once that was done, the various pieces that were reviewed were the, the camera makes models and cost, the server architecture, if you like, and the cost of that. And when I say architecture, part of that had to do with how much space is there, how much disk space? Would they recommend number of processors, things like that, amount of memory. So also, we evaluated the professional services costs, we evaluated the, things like shipping and incidental costs like that. Also, we tried to evaluate, we did our very best to find out what would it cost us to have three years of maintenance support for the system? And then that, that came, then we came up with what we thought was apples-to-apples pricing across 15 proposals. And so that, once that happened, I did my best to identify four of the, what I felt were the best candidates out of the 15. And Mr. Schu and I sat down together and reviewed those and invited those four back for in-person interviews with myself, Mr. Schu, and my network engineer, our network administrator. And so after the interviews, and we clarified again a little deeper, there was one more round. Because out of that interview process, again, became some design changes and some, some back and forth with how would this work and how would this be accomplished? So there was, there was some room for design changes in that discussion because we were trying to find, we were trying to find a solution that was going to be the best for District 205. And out of that, there was one vendor out of that round of interview and follow-up question and answer that we narrowed down to one vendor. So the criteria, I think you see the, the decision matrix, behind the decision matrix, or the matrices, really, because there were two rounds, is more, to get to, for example, what the value of the initial cost or recurring cost were, there's, there's a lot of detail behind all the different costs for cameras and servers. But when it came right down to it, we used basically scores, raw score values that were weighted based on price being, or cost being the most heavily weighted. And then, the technical merit had to do with things such as how many server boxes would there be in the rack, and how much rack space would it take? And what kind of CPUs are there, and how much processing power would there be? How much disk space, and how much video would we be able to store? So that, that became sort of the technical merit component. And we did our best to evaluate all the different pieces and make an objective decision as we possibly could. So. It was pretty, I have to say, it was thorough. It was pretty, I have to say it was thorough, because I knew when we got 15 responses, we were going to have to be pretty thorough to narrow it down to one.
Thank you for that explanation. I think that's important, just so the community know what our process was and what our evaluation. So that was my intent in asking, just for a more open discussion on what that was. So thank you for your explanation.
Anything else? Hearing none. Mrs. Walsh?
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Bizcito is absent. Mr. Collins?
Yes. Six ayes, no nays, one absent. That motion passes. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's agenda action items. Mr. Purnell?
Yes, this is, if you remember at the last meeting, we presented a recommendation for instructional materials to support Aaron's Law. It has been on display, and we are in the position now to recommend that the board adopt the instructional materials for kindergarten in relation to Aaron's Law.
And any discussion? I guess first we need a motion, you're right. I'm sorry.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the instructional materials as recommended by the administration.
I'll second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by John. Any discussion? Hearing none? We're spending money on this, right, Mrs. Walsh? We're not? Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right, that motion passes. Next is action on closed session, on one closed session item. John?
I move that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding of, quote, "language for extension of retirement date."
Do I have a second?
I second.
Moved by John, seconded by Margaret. May I give a quick explanation? So generally, our teachers and administrators, when they're going to retire, sign a letter of their intent to retire, which is irrevocable, and that is generally for four years later. And every once in a while, life hands you a curve ball. In this case, this particular teacher's spouse died. So the teacher came to the board with the help of the union and asked that we modify her retirement plan and asked to work one more year. So that's what we're about to vote on, to extend her working career by one more year. I just want to say that our prayers are with her and our heart goes out to her. So, any discussion? Okay? I just need a, I do not need a roll call vote on this. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. That leads us to board communications. Anything?
Good. I just have two things. I just want to give the board an update on park testing. We are in the midst of park. Elementary started last week. The park testing continues this week with middle school and elementary simultaneously. The only real big problem we had, and I believe I emailed the board on this, was last Wednesday, we had some periodic outages with AT&amp;T, not related to park testing, just our internet was in and out. Unfortunately, bad timing for us with all the kids taking park, but staff and administration, everybody worked very hard and really minimized the disruption that we experienced, and the rest of the week has gone fairly well. We're continuing to do park the rest of this week. Next week, we will add the freshman class at York. They will be taking the park test starting on Monday, I believe. So I want to thank Dave Smith, Charles Brandell, and the tech staff, the principals and staff, for really stepping up and really doing the best job they could under very difficult circumstances to make this work for our students, and I think it's a credit to them that it has gone as smoothly as it has with the least amount of disruption. So thanks to all of you. They have put in endless hours. They have both been on more webcasts than I would ever want to wish on anybody in a lifetime to get, because the only way the state updates us is if you go to their webcam website. So I want to thank everybody involved for that. So thank you. Second thing I just want to point out, we have a very special program that is going to start at York High School, March 19th and 20th. It is Young Hearts for Life, and this is, with the help, a big help, from Elmhurst Memorial Hospital, we are going to be doing EKG screenings for all of the students at York whose parents want to take advantage of that, free of cost. And so every child will be able to get a health heart screening, and the research has shown that while you don't have many students who come out of the EKG with any concerns, it does run about 1% to 3% on average as we do these screenings, and so the screening will result in, if it's an abnormal, EKG would refer to another follow-up. Sometimes there's nothing to it, but other times they have found abnormalities. And as you know, every once in a while, you read in the paper or in the news media of a young child, an adolescent, who all of a sudden passes away because of an undetected heart defect. So this is really a credit to Elmhurst Memorial and all the people volunteering to do these screenings. So March 19th and 20th.
I think it's an ECG? It's actually an imaging, not the EKG.
Well, they call it both. It's also known as EKG or ECG. Yeah, you're right. It's either one. And it's actually, it's an echocardiogram.
Any more medical? Karen?
The only point is that it is a real contribution. It is really a resource. It's no small matter to do that for two full days.
And we do thank Elmhurst Memorial sincerely for that. Now I'll move, turn it over to Karen.
Thanks, Jim. I just want to follow up on the PTA legislative forum that was held on February 23rd. It's currently being aired on Comcast, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99, on Sundays at 7:30 PM Central Time, and Fridays at 4:00 PM. It may also be found at www.elmhursttv.com. Board of Education meetings are also available for viewing under the District 205 tab and website. Thank you.
Now you know I won't let this rest. You said they did, the legislators there did agree to come back and talk to the board at some point?
They did.
Okay.
And so we, it would be very tight to do it during spring break, and some of us, that's the only time we can get away with our children, and so we were thinking in June or July, depending on if the legislative session extends beyond May 31st. If that's the case, it'll be July, otherwise June, so that's what we're planning.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, that leads us to some upcoming meetings. Tuesday, March 17th, Finance and Operations Committee meeting at 6:30 here in these rooms. Tuesday, March 24th, is our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. Wednesday, April 8th, special closed session meeting with our superintendent's search firm. Monday, April 13th, is the same. Tuesday, April 14th, is our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:30 PM. Thursday, April 16th, is the Performance Management Committee meeting, and then Saturday, April 18th, again, a special closed session meeting with our superintendent's search firm. That's all there is on the agenda. So I declare this meeting adjourned.